This meeting of the Forest Hills Board of Education, Monday, November 26, 2018, 7:00 PM. Ms. Cropper, would you please call Rol?
Mrs. Barber?
Here.
Ms. Choice?
Here.
Dr. Heights?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Fruman?
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Safety, the exits are over here, to your right, our left, and in the back of the room here. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please? So moved.
Second.
Ms. Cropper?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Heights?
Yes.
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Ms. Choice?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes. Item three, approval of minutes.
I move we approve the minutes of the Policy Committee meeting of October 16th and the minutes of the regular meeting of October 22nd.
Second.
Ms. Cropper?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Choice?
Yes.
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Dr. Heights?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes. Correspondence for the Board of Education, Treasurer and Superintendent, Mr. Prebles?
I have a few items, sir. These are for correspondence that's going out. I'd like to remind everyone that tomorrow, November 27th, at 7:00 PM, we will be hosting our second Teletown Hall meeting, and that will happen on telephone, and people should be this evening receiving a telephone call from me indicating how they get involved tomorrow evening as part of the district's engagement process. Also, a card will be coming out in the mail that reminds people that on December 10th, this coming December 10th, we will have our first Town Hall meeting to talk about engagement in the school district, in the future of the school district. That will be at Turpin High School, and that will happen at 7:00 PM. So these cards will be in people's mailbox. They'll be showing up yet this week. And we also have the district's fall/winter newsletter that will be coming out in early December so that people have a sense of the more global perspective of the school district. So again, November 27th, that will be tomorrow, Teletown Hall meeting, 7:00. December 10th, at Turpin High School, we will have an open Town Hall meeting, start at 7:00. Cards have been sent out to remind people of that, and the district's newsletter will be coming out this coming, early December, for the fall and winter updates.
Excellent.
In case somebody wants to participate in the telephone Town Hall, what do they do?
Well, they'll get a telephone call this evening reminding them tomorrow, and then tomorrow there will be a telephone call that comes to them, and then they stay on the line. And they can also call in.
Ms. Cropper?
I have no correspondence, thank you.
Any of the board members? This is a meeting of the Board of Education and public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda under public commentary. Individuals who'd like to share their opinions or comments concerning a topic on the Board's agenda should fill out a form and, where did they go? Hand them in over up front, and we'll recognize you at the appropriate time in the meeting. Item 5.1, Wilson Elementary.
I'd like to invite Erin Store, Principal Store, to the podium, and she's going to introduce some very special guests that we have this evening.
We have four of our Girls on the Run coaches here with us today. We have Tricia Hauserman, 6th grade teacher, Edie Zimmerman, 4th grade teacher, Amy Lynch, 5th grade teacher, and Liz Folino, our intervention specialist. And we have several students here who are going to introduce themselves and talk about the program and the positive impact it's had on them.
We're the members of Wilson 6th Grade Girls on the Run Heart and Soul Team. Girls on the Run inspires girls to recognize their inner strength and celebrate what makes them one of a kind. Our coaches lead us through a circulum that included discussions, activities, and running
Girls on the Run was such a great experience for me. They incorporated such fun activities and games hidden in these great messages that every girl should learn. I think that, I thank Girls on the Run for helping me grow in my brain, body, spirit, and social.
During this program, I learned about the girl we are. I also enjoyed supporting others and cheering them on. This experience helped me with bonding with others. Every practice was different with, from the other. The themes were unique and had different concepts. It was really important that teachers took their time to stay after school and train us for the 5K.
In GOTR, I learned a lot about myself. I learned that I am stronger than I ever knew, that I can challenge myself to do anything that I want, that these other girls are so strong as well. In addition to making new friends and strengthening relationship with others, one of the greatest things about GOTR was that I got to bond with my dad. He was my running buddy. He is so busy with work and my brother's sports activities that this was just our time. I will always appreciate the support from him during GOTR and the 5K. The coaches are amazing and so important to guiding and supporting the team. Thank you, coaches. I strongly encourage 5th graders going into 6th grade to participate in GOTR because it can help build confidence and lifelong relationships. Getting this program to other girls can make a big difference.
Over the last 10 weeks, we developed fitness skills and created and tracked our goals and reflected in our journal after every lesson. We were inspired to be joyful, healthy, and confident. At the end of the season, we were physically and emotionally prepared to celebrate at our 5K in Sawyer Point.
Thank you very much, Girls on the Run. Item 6.1, we have Nine United this evening, Katie Curry and Jessica Pierce.
Hi. If you are not familiar with Nine United, it is a student-led and adult-supported nonprofit service organization uniting all nine Forest Hill schools around developmentally appropriate service tactics, student leadership, as well as aid and assistance for families in need within our community. I am Jessie Pierce. I am a senior at Turpin High School, and I've been a member of the Student Leadership Team for going on three years now. What I enjoy most about being a part of Nine United is the connection that I feel as I make a direct impact on people in our community. It is important for me to be a part of Nine United because I have attended four out of the nine Forest Hill schools, and my three siblings, along with my mom, all attended Forest Hill schools.
Hi, I'm Katie Curry. I'm also a senior at Turpin, and this is my second year at Nine United and my first year on the core leadership team. What I love most about Nine United is that we take care of some of the commonly overlooked aspects of donation and community service. And I like to say that in Nine United, we support everyone and we forget no one. And also in elementary school, I was a huge fan of supporting Shop &amp; Share, and I went to that event every year, so it's super rewarding to be a part of that now again as a high schooler. And just a side note, Jessie and I, as student leaders in this program, we had to be nominated, elected, interviewed, all that fancy stuff, and so we're really grateful to be in this So as I was saying, Shop &amp; Share is Nine United's flagship event, and this is what actually started Nine United 10 years ago today. Not today, but 10 years ago. This is our 10-year anniversary, and the event begins today. That's what I meant to say. All nine schools throughout this week will be donating money, and this money will be used to benefit families within our own community who may need help this holiday season. This year will mark our 10-year anniversary of Shop &amp; Share, and in these 10 years, we've seen exponential growth that we are super grateful for. We have had a large increase in the number of families we are able to support, the number of community partners we have forged, and the amount of donations we've received.
During our first year, we supported 12 families, and in 2017, we supported over 400 families, which was over 1,500 individuals, and we're looking forward to growing these numbers again this year. Any donations left over after Shop &amp; Share will go to supporting students and families in our community. Through this project, we have learned that crisis does not just happen during Christmas. In that same vein, we have forged a new partnership with InterParis Ministries this year focusing on student and family hygiene and wellness. We are working to fill the gap to provide snacks for kids during and after school as well as personal care items.
Another one of Nine United's student-led and creative initiatives is water cup to benches, and this year we actually have a new partnership with the Anderson Township Park District. And with this event or project, the community will be collecting plastic bottle caps and lids that get recycled into park benches. And these benches can be found within the Anderson parks. Our first one was donated in October and can be found at Joel's Park, and this winter we're hoping to donate two more benches to Johnson Hills Park.
To understand more about Nine United and the work that we do right here in our own community, please visit our website, nineunited.org. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. Item 7.1, public comments. We have one, unless there's others who haven't turned them in. Martha Veman, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. It's nice to see you all again. I hope you saw in today's Enquirer brief article on the Talawanda School District. Last week, the Talawanda Board of Education voted to retire their Native-themed mascot. They're giving up their Indian Head logo, changing their name from Braves to Brave, and keeping a T to represent their school. Talawanda plans to phase in the change to keep the cost down. Talawanda changed their name because they listened. They listened to members of the Miami Nation who asked them to change their mascot. They listened to their Native American students who began speaking out about bullying and other adverse impacts of the mascot on them. They began speaking out five years ago. They also listened to research that shows stereotypical mascots negatively impact the learning of all students. When we listen to the research and the preponderance of Native American leaders and organizations, then the decision is clear. We know that perpetuating stereotypes inhibits real understanding of and relationships with Native people today. I speak for many when I say that I hope Forest Hills will soon follow Talawanda and support change. Thank you.
Item 8.1, Mr. Prebles?
This is a resolution that authorizes the Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent of Business Operations to execute change orders and construction change directives. This is an update, last year on July 27th, excuse me, the November 27th meeting of the Board. This amount was approved, and we are asking once again that this happens. So the Superintendent recommends the Board approve the resolution authorizing the Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent of Business Operations to execute change orders and construction change directives for the amount listed in the document.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, same as we've done prior years during the construction project?
This is just renewing something we've already approved, correct?
Yes. Renewing it for the, yeah, the next year. That's right. Ms. Cropper?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Heights?
Yes.
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Ms. Choice?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes. Item 9.1 is just merely the confirmation that our organizational meeting will be held on January 4th, 2019, at 7:00 AM. Everybody's welcome at that point. We'll elect Board leadership for the next calendar year and fix the schedule for regular meetings. I'll look forward to seeing you all on January 4th at 7:00 AM. Anything more required on that? No? 9.2, Mr. Smith?
The Board is aware of this, but the audience may not. The Board is not able to get together to chat over various subjects except to do this in public, and so that's what we're about to do here on the next item. We've had a couple of presentations from various people about Great Oaks, and I think everybody here is very familiar with Great Oaks. And we've also had some discussion about strengthening our relationship with Great Oaks and potentially having more students participate in Great Oaks programs. One of the things that, we had some brief discussion when, help me, the CEO of Great Oaks.
Dr. Snyder.
Dr. Snyder was here.
Harry Snyder.
Was to talk about the possibility of having Board representation there. Currently, Great Oaks is made up of, I think it's 36 different school districts from around, it's not just Hamilton County, but from a number of counties. And it also includes three ESCs, including the Hamilton County ESC. Right now, the way that a agreement was put together many years ago, that Hamilton County's local school districts would be represented by the Hamilton County ESC members, their five Board members, and that's been in place for quite some time. The school districts in Hamilton County that are not local, for example, Winton Woods, Wyoming, Princeton, well, Mason's not Hamilton County, but Mount Healthy, because they are technically city schools, they have a representative on the Great Oaks Board. Like I said, any kind of Board of 36 people, that's a pretty, that's a large Board. But, so the question came up, how would we want to have representation on their Board? Would we want to have representation on the Board? Actually, that's probably the first question I want to ask my fellow Board members. And because the law changed about three years ago, one of the options is, it doesn't have to be a Board member anymore. It could be somebody appointed from the community. There are four or five different criteria that they need to, or could qualify under. But, so I wanted to just hear from my fellow Board members, as well as our Superintendent and the Treasurer, if, what the thinking was. Now, one of the options is if we went to the Hamilton County ESC, and I did have a conversation with Bill Ferguson, who's on the Hamilton County ESC, they could possibly yield one of their Board members and appoint somebody from the Forest Hill School District, either a Board member or a resident. That is an option. I'm not sure there's anybody on this Board who feels like they need another Board to be a member of. But, like I said, I just wanted to, of the seven of us here, this is our only opportunity to have these kind of conversations as a group, and I just wanted to hear, any thoughts?
I believe it's important that we have some type of representation.
Scott, anything you want to add? You're a lot closer to this than we are, and I...
Well, we have part of our district strategic vision, increasing the opportunities for students through pathways and other avenues, and obviously, without question, Great Oaks is a great facility, and they offer a quality education, and they provide things there that we do not here, and we have a very good relationship. And I think that any time we have an opportunity to provide leadership at the Board level, I think that's a good thing, because we want to make sure that our students and our staff are represented as we continue to develop new programming and to increase opportunities for students at Great Oaks. So I see it as a benefit for the school district, most specifically the students, and opportunities for us to continue with discussions that provide greater opportunity for students in many different pathways.
What else?
It certainly has my support. I feel like the way that education is changing, the way the workforce is changing, that they offer things that we just can't. So I think it fills a nice gap that we have in Forest Hills, and I think it could help make the programming be a little more cohesive if we had representation, so I support it.
I think it should be someone from our district rather than, have them appoint someone.
Rather than, I'm sorry, what?
Have them appoint someone.
They would yield to somebody that we propose to them.
Yeah. The Hamilton County Board is composed of five people, and all five of them serve on the Great Oaks Board in order to represent all the local school districts in Hamilton County.
Yeah, right now, we don't have a right even to have somebody on the Board, isn't that correct?
I'm sorry, what?
We don't have a right.
No.
We have to go to them and...
Right.
Ask for this opportunity.
Right, and we'd have to go to the Hamilton County ESC and ask them to yield one of their appointments. And we're, I think, the second largest out of all the school districts in Hamilton County that are technically local and therefore represented by the Hamilton County ESC.
Well, I think that we're all in agreement that it's a strong partnership, and it's becoming more important. So if we can get them to do that, putting aside for now who's going to be that individual, if we can get a spot, we'll take it, I think. That's the consensus, right?
I'll continue discussions, then, and maybe, Scott, we can talk together about how best to move that forward. I want to make it real clear, I'm not lobbying for another Board for myself because I can't pick one up right now.
Well, we'll worry about who fills that role if we can secure it. I'm sure.
In my role now in a prior district, Board of Education opted to do the same thing, and they, once they decided to do that, they had an application process that had specific goals and objectives that the Board had. People who were interested, who had interest, then applied to the Board. I'm suggesting this, it may be that our Board determines a different method works best in Forest Hills, but then there were applications that came in, they were reviewed, there was a legitimate interview process, and then a selection was made, and then that person goes and represents our Board at the meetings, and then comes back to this meeting as many times as this Board desires to provide reports on how things are moving along. So you set the stage for your expectations and your goals as a Board, and then the person reports back on their interactions. And obviously, me being a Superintendent, I'm seeing Dr. Snyder and Greg as part of his work within curriculum, he's working with them as well. So that would be my initial response to how we might think about organizing that, if we can get the seat.
Yeah, well, that's the other thing I was going to say is, I just shared with you, quite frankly, the easiest option, and that's get them to agree to just yield a seat. Now, we could go to the Great Oaks Board and try and undo the agreement that's, that right now binds all the local school districts in Hamilton County, and that would be a lot of work. That would be Plan B. First, I'd rather take the easy route. But I'll continue discussion, we may talk about it more, and I'll get back.
All right. Thank you. Other Board discussion? All right, item 10.1 then, under Business Operations, Mr. Broadwater?
We're going to start with the change orders at Anderson High School for the business operations. What I would tell the Board, as you look through the change orders, the way that we have it listed in the Board agenda is the way it appears on the AIA form, so when you see like Bulletin 21, that's what's on the form, and then as we get the questions on Sunday evening, or whenever you have questions, then we kind of answer through those. So we have provided the Board with the list of change orders prior to this meeting, as well as explanations. I would also tell the Board that right now at Anderson High School, the change orders were at about 2.2%. In the program, it was 4% for contingencies. So we're still under the contingencies at Anderson High School, knowing that it's going to be complete in August of 19. So the motion to approve the change orders submitted by Travelers Bond and Specialty Insurance in the amount of $121,259 is presented, is going to be the recommended action. What I would like to do is kind of go through a few of those as we list it, just so you have an idea, or anybody that has questions. For Change Order 35, this was for $5,338. The biggest expense was, as we went through and opened up a doorway at Anderson High School, we found that there was a vent in there, and therefore we had to relocate that vent, and that was for a price of $3,864, and that would be an unforeseen cost. That is something that would not have been seen in design. For Change Order 36, which is $22,133, I would list a couple items there. Adding chase walls on the side of the unit vents, as the unit vents were placed in Anderson High School, you could still see the electric as it was being provided into those unit vents. Therefore, obviously, that's against code, so it had to be redesigned, and that was for the price of $6,196. The next item I would throw out there is to remove the loose falling floor patch materials and install new floor leveller. And that was the area backed by the old industrial arts area in the back hallway. The floor had been patched many, many years ago, and as the old flooring was pulled up, that was discovered. That was an unforeseen event that happened, and that was $6,527. Originally, we were given a value much, much larger than that, and we were able to come up with a better solution to fixing that. For Change Order 37, that is for $18,132. Bulletin 25 is the large one there, that is for $10,978. That is for HVAC materials that were not included in the design, and the HVAC, as we went through over the summer, Performance Construction determined that there were some things missing from that original design. The other change order value that was large, the $4,170 for installing the water softener. The water softener was purchased through Food Services, but the actual installation required the moving of piping, which was quite extensive, and that's what the value was for that. For Change Order 38, that is $34,536. A lot of this is due to the fire pit, which is out by the baseball field. The wiring for the fire alarm needed to be provided for $13,000 roughly. To, the next thing was to install a sump pump, which was also related to that fire pit out by the baseball field, which is $4,400. And then in the back, backed by the new elevator, in the, backed by the auxiliary gym, it's to install a yard drain by the five-stop elevator, that was $4,300. What we found was, water was starting to back up, and a drain needed to be installed. So those, I would say, were designed, that was missed. For another large value, the replacing of a 4-inch PRV, which is a pressure release valve, that is something that initially we were going to attempt to maintain the old one. The old one was not able to withstand the pressure, therefore it did need to be replaced. So that was something that was unforeseen. Change Order 39 was for $7,368. One of the large ones there was to mount the grid fixtures and the non-grid ceiling. You'll see pictures of that when we go through the update. That is in what used to be the old weight room, which is now the wrestling room. As you remember, the district did a large lighting purchase, and in the design, they asked for the incorrect lights. Therefore, this was a fix so that we could still use the lights that were purchased, and that was for $3,178. Change Order 40 for $33,752. The large one there was the band room, had existing painting, sheeting was coming off the walls. The new band room is where the old gym was, and therefore there was paint that was latex and oil, and it needed to be peeled off, and therefore that was for the existing issue that we had with the paint. And then the front wall ended up being drywalled, so we did not have to go through that process, but that was for $10,320. So the Superintendent recommends the Board approve the change orders submitted by Travelers Bond and Specialty Insurance in the amount of $121,259.
Are we going to do these by consent agenda? What, 10.1 through 13.5?
That's what's listed.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to 10.2. The recommended action is a motion to approve the change orders submitted by Monarch Construction in the amount of $245,394 as presented. I would tell you, with these change orders, we are sitting at 5.4% at Turpin. 4% was a contingency, so approximately 1.4% over with the contingency, which, given today's rate of construction, we're doing okay. But it was originally in the program. $817,000 was set aside for the contingency. We are right at a We are right at about $1 million with these. And the good news is December 1st, we are done at Turpin. We will have one more change order for extended time for November and that should be about it at Turpin. So with Turpin, Change Order 58 is for $27,508. This is the change order that if the board remembers, in the social studies wing, it was determined that the back wall was only attached at the top and the bottom of the building, that we needed to reattach the wall in the back of Turpin High School to make sure that that was appropriate. Therefore, Bulletin 21 revisions, about 12,000 of the 16,000 was for that, the rest of the 4,000 was for the HVAC amendments that needed to be made to accommodate that change. Change Order 59 is for $33,609. If you look at a large one there, it was connect existing D-Wing PA system to the new building system. That was for $5,219. In the design, it was missed that we would have to connect those and that is the change, part of the change order for that. Looking at another one, unforeseen existing gutter issues. The program called for gutters to be taken down, new gutters up. The existing gutters, it was found that there were about three layers of gutters inside the original one, therefore, the cost to take them down was a little bit more expensive, which is $4,400. For Change Order 60, that is for $87,584. That is the September 2018 extended overhead is established by Change Order 34 at $43,074. And October 2018 extended overhead is established by the same change order for $44,510. Change Order 61 is for $49,370. This is, if the board remembers, we had a science classroom that had issues that we've gone through and renovated those and that is to replace the base cabinets and epoxy countertops for $49,370. And Change Order 62 is for $47,323 and that is for the three science classrooms in the back, which needed the brick veneer as well as the windows replaced and was not in the program. So that is for $47,000. And the good news is, I believe, all of that will be finished. Our teacher, I will tell you, our teacher, Mrs. Corey Mullins, has been extremely patient as we've gone through that and we appreciate all of that. But that is pretty much finished up at Turpin within the next couple of days. So the superintendent recommends the board approve the change orders submitted by Monarch Construction in the amount of $245,394. Next, we have a change order for Maddox Elementary. And Maddox Elementary, this is a refund of $1,300 for the dedication plaque we had made outside of the program. So the superintendent recommends the board approve the change orders submitted by Seaford Building Company in the amount of $1,300 as a refund. So that's $1,300 to the good there. Next that we have.
Before you move on.
I'm sorry?
Before you move on, you've just run through change orders at Anderson High School, Turpin High School, and then a small deduct on Maddox. And we've sat up here and you think Mr. Broadwater's just reviewing this stuff and we're just shaking our heads. And I've said this at meetings before, but as we go through a lot of numbers, you all need to know, the public needs to know, while you all are hearing this for the first time, we're not. This information was provided to us in a document from Superintendent Prebles two weeks ago. We got it again as we get our agenda and board materials in preparation for this meeting. Every single one of us reviews this information. We all separately email our call about our questions and those are all answered to our satisfaction before they're brought to us by Mr. Broadwater at the meeting tonight. And so as we're sitting here listening to this and not asking questions, it's because we've already asked those questions and they've already been answered to our satisfaction. We also ask for and receive each and every time, a summary of all the change orders and how we're doing to budget. So as we're approving these things, we know where we are and how it compares to the budget and that's important to us, we're keeping track of it. The other things, for those that you have been paying attention with respect to Anderson High School, that work was initially done by a contractor, Performance Construction, and if you have heard in the past, I have always abstained for any votes involving Performance and Construction because my firm does work for that company. I've done that since the very beginning of the project, including the award of that bid, I've never voted on anything. The work today that is being submitted to us is not from Performance Construction, but is through the bonding company, Travelers Insurance, and so I'm able to vote on those this evening. So I will be doing so and it's not inconsistent with my abstaining on the prior projects with respect to Anderson High School. Anyone else care to offer anything with respect to?
Well, to further that though, you personally have nothing to do with Performance.
Oh, never have.
Right. I just wanted.
That's right.
Yes.
But my firm does, thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Broadwater.
And I can assure the audience that the board definitely does ask quite a few questions as we go through them.
And you know, it's interesting, a lot of times when we push back on some of these, you guys have already, you've mentioned at least one or two already tonight, where you pushed back on the initial amount and came up with an alternate solution. Because I got to tell you, when I look at some of these, like hooking up a PA system for five grand, it seems like a whole new system ought to be five grand, but anyway, so we have pushed back on these and I think they know that they're coming if we see something that doesn't seem right, so thank you.
Thank you. And I can assure you, there's not a single change order that we don't push back on. We continue and the good news is, Turpin is, it's almost, almost complete here. For next one, 10.4 is the full and final release of the Agreement for Professional Consultant Services with Abercrombie and Associates Incorporated rendered in connection with the Wilson Elementary School Project. What this is, it's an $11,000 deduct, so $11,000 coming to us if you read through the agreement. There was an incorrect design at Wilson Elementary at the onset with the sanitary line, so we have just reached an agreement so that we would receive that. So when you talk about pushing back, we've pushed back that. And I will also tell you, the fix of that design, we have been in contact with SSOE and they will be covering the fix of that design as well. So the superintendent recommends the board approve the full and final release of the Agreement for Professional Consultant Services with Abercrombie and Associates Incorporated rendered in connection with the Wilson Elementary School Project as shown in the attachment. For 10.5, this is the Resolution Amendment to the Agreement with SSOE Incorporated, which has been discussed at length with the board. And the superintendent recommends the board adopt the Resolution Amendment to the Agreement for Design Professional Services with SSOE Incorporated for the facility construction and renovations related to November 4th, 2014 bond issue as shown in the attachment. Next is 10.6. This is the Second Amendment to the Zimmer Company Incorporated Consultant Agreement. If you recall, we had a First Amendment where we had a not-to-exceed value. We have brought that not-to-exceed value down by $5,000 to $10,000 because that expires December 31st. We need the Second Amendment to get us through August at Anderson High School. The superintendent recommends the board approve the Second Amendment to the Zimmer Company Incorporated Consultant Agreement for Owner Representative Services for the period of January 1st, 2019 through October 31st, 2019 as shown in the attachment. And along with that, I will say, if it is determined that October 31st is not necessary, we can make sure that we can suspend that agreement if needed. For the next one, 10.7 is the facilities update. The good news is, we don't have as many updates because we only got two schools, Anderson High School. What we have in there is, that is the wrestling room, as you're looking through what will be the percussion room, so that is the exterior wall. In October, we had a lot of work to do and in November, we've got a pretty good-looking weight room. I would point out, the lights, if you notice, they're below the grids. That was the change order we had so that we could get those below the grids. It was just structurally a lot less expensive than buying new ones. The next one, this is our new percussion room. It used to be the old part of the weight room that had the cardio equipment. The wall that we talked about, that was not fire-rated, is the wall right above, if you go up the stairs, you'll see that there's a wall that is missing. That was a wall that was not fire-rated, that had to be taken down and it will be put up and that is the mechanical room up there, but this is going to be the percussion room, which is also attached to the band room. Next, this is just showing the exterior of what used to be the old gym. We've now got the wall up and you can see in October, we did not have the exterior windows. In November, we've got the windows up and the band room is looking very, very nice. I will tell you, Performing Arts, the teachers, Rob has worked with the Performing Arts teachers, they have been awesome in terms of being flexible. We believe we're going to be able to turn over those areas sooner than they had asked and that's a kudo to the teachers that are being flexible. But we should have all of our Performing Arts areas completed before the end of school and then over the summer, it's going to be locker rooms and the air conditioning for the gym and some other things. So looking at this, this is, looking at the percussion room. Yeah, this is the percussion room. Looking from the other side, if you notice, there's a hole up on the wall. One of the change orders was to close that hole. The reason is, we did not know the hole was there, there were banners over top of that hole for thirty years. That actually goes under the stage, which isn't needed. So we closed that up and the banner's gone. This is looking at our new band room. And the band room, the wall over here is, it was the same material as the far wall, that has been replaced with drywall. The original wall was like a poured cement that was chipping and it just was not going to adhere the paint, so therefore, the drywall was put up. The exterior wall is the new block, the farther wall is the wall that needed the stripping and the opposite wall was the same. As you can see, the wall below is the front wall and it's, it had a lot of waves in it and just was not going to be able to hold paint any longer. You can see the clouds up top and the clouds and the lighting are starting to get finished and this band room is going to look pretty spectacular when it starts. It's going to be a very, very nice space for kids. This is the weight room looking from the other side. The door down there is the door going into the percussion room. So the weight room is complete now. The flooring is going to be stained cement because you're going to have wrestling pads on it anyway, but it's going to be a stained cement in that area. And this is the detention area, we're close, the last thing, this was in October and we are just waiting for Duke Energy to come out and move that pole. If they can get out, then we will get it regraded and will be done. If you notice, we were able to take trees from a different project that were not going to be used and we placed them on the hillside there, just in case kids decided they wanted to sled ride, we want to make sure we had.
You did a nice job with that.
Yeah, it turned out very, very nice. Yep. Okay, on to Turpin. The good news is, we don't have a whole lot of changes with Turpin. The math teachers are in the classroom. That is a classroom in October. It's now got the new furniture with the, this is a math classroom, I believe this is Mr. Shea's classroom, who is up teaching Algebra II. And in speaking with him, all of the technology is working and the kids love the furniture and it's just a very, very nice space. This is just looking at a hallway in October versus November and this area has been turned over, so we're all set. Next is the same thing, just looking down a hallway on, this is the upper level, which is the math classrooms. Same thing, hallway and as you notice, there were lockers put in on the, through the hallway and the lockers turned out very, very nice. They're actually a little extra wider so the kids can get all their books in there. This is again, the hallway and as you can see, our custodians were extremely busy trying to keep up with the construction and get the flooring waxed and have done a nice job with that. And the last slide here is the Turpin Auxiliary Gym. You will see down here, this was in October, this is the last space that needs to be finished and we are virtually done with that. They are working on the flooring, they've got it painted, it's pretty much done. They are putting in the bleachers, it's going to be three rows of bleachers for small activities that are going to take place in there. This space, just like Anderson's, will be used as a spillover for all the athletics, which was much, much needed, but also as a testing space for our kids when they take the large testing. Then the last slide I have is the one we provide every month as you go through. I would point out, at Turpin High School, winter of 2018, 2019, we've hit that deadline, it's going to be December 1st and they will be done. And right now, we're tracking along with Anderson, it says summer of 2019. We are tracking along where, like I said, the Performing Arts will be done before we leave for school this year and then in the summer, we've got, it's a lot of work in the locker rooms, but ideally, we get that finished before the summer of 2019 is complete. The contract is August 15th of 2019, we are done at Anderson High School. So that completes the Business Operations Report.
Questions, anyone?
Mr. Frumman, I'm sorry, go ahead.
At Anderson, okay, Turpin classrooms are obviously finished at this point. Are there any, and if so, how many classrooms have not been converted, finished, whatever you want to call it, remodeled at Anderson?
Yeah, well, the good news is, all the academic classroom, I say academic, all the classrooms that are on the opposite of Performing Arts are complete. We're going through the punch list now, which is, it's going to take some time, but all of our classrooms are done. The exception is, in the Performing Arts area, which if you're not aware, we're going to have, the orchestra's got the entire third floor. The second floor is going to be shared by choir as well as, there's going to be a black box theater, which is going to be a very nice space for Mr. Weddle and his program. And then the lower level is band, percussion and then the wrestling room. That level is going to be complete shortly. So we've got, in a couple of days, we've got a moving company coming in to clear out everything. There's about 60 years of sheet music up there that we've got to get rid of and that's going to take a little bit of time, but our kids today, I saw, were helping out Mr. Haney. But as far as classrooms, the good news is, they're all done. Is that, would you agree, Mr. Fellows?
I kind of sense that because my, I don't know about you guys, but my number of complaints have dropped to about zero, so anyway, go ahead.
Mr. Frumman, board, if I can, just for a couple of seconds. Last year about this time, I think the Board of Education, maybe a little bit before, made a very good decision to kind of stop the presses and take a look at where we are and how things are moving forward. We had a tumultuous time in our school district at that point in time and then Mike came into this role and sort of took over this project and I just wanted to say that at the beginning, I would be dishonest if I didn't say he appeared to be a bit overwhelmed just because of the magnitude of everything that was coming in his direction. And over a year, while all of this was taking place and the many things were happening with our construction companies and our partners, Mike started to organize the processes and started to organize the infrastructure and the people within that department that he works with to start to get a handle on things and to develop a line of communication with our partners and with the people that work in our school district, including myself and the Board of Education, to kind of set the course back to where it needs to be and to meet the expectations of our community. So now, as you can see, when he presents this information, there is detailed understanding and informative presentations by Mike. He has not total control over the project, I don't know that anybody ever could or ever would have total control over something that moves as rapidly as this does with as many possibilities for hidden things behind flags and so forth and so on, but then he did a big thing this summer and he put his foot down and he and Rob Fellows worked tirelessly to redesign the way that Anderson was going to be done, the sequence of events that was going to take place at Anderson, which actually put those students, our students, in classrooms so that they could be in a learning situation this year as opposed to what it may have been if he would not have taken control of that circumstance. And so we redesigned Anderson and as you can begin to see from the pictures and you can see from the numbers, yes, there are situations where the change orders have brought us to a place where we are over budget, but those numbers are not consistent with what we see across the nation with overages related to change orders. So I want to thank Mike for his work and for where we are at this particular point in time because I think we're in a better place than where we were and certainly, we've got a long way to go. August is a long stretch away, but for me, today, as the superintendent, I cannot tell you how much I appreciate what Mr. Broadwater has been able to do and the team that he works with, including Mr. Eckert and Mr. Fellows, Mr. Spencer, because these jobs all took place relatively related to the high schools. So I feel good today of where we are and I think the community should be proud of where we are and I want to thank them for their generosity, thank the board for making that decision back then. It was not easy at all to stop and reorganize all of this. And again, we are not finished and there are change orders to come and there are certainly battles left out there that we'll have to deal with, but for now, I think we're in a better place and I want to thank Mike for his leadership in getting us at least to this point.
I appreciate it. To the board, I say thanks for To the Board, I say thanks for giving the trust in me, and also to our principals. I know it has been a challenge going through it, but, boy, they're nice spaces for the kids. I know our kids like them, so thanks.
Thank you. Human Resources Report, Ms. Carnahan.
Item 11.1, A Retirement. Chris Weber, one of our intervention aides at Wilson Elementary, has made the decision to retire at the end of this year, this school year. And so, after 22 years of service to the district, we would like to say congratulations to Chris and best wishes on her retirement, once that happens in June. So, Item B, Resignations. Item C is just the verbiage for the Items E through J. D is a change in salary. Item E, these are appointments for probationary contracts. You may recall, the last meeting, we talked just a bit about our food services and that, you know, Tia Strauss, our supervisor, was still looking at the services there, and you can see that she has several recommendations here to hire cooks. If you go on to Page 3, you see that we have several of our staff who are ending their probationary status and being appointed one-year contracts. Item F, Special Services Appointments. I'll give you just a moment to look through those, Pages 3 through 5. On Page 5, Item G, these would be our coaches, consultants, advisors, and you will find these on Pages 5 through 7. Item H, Student Teachers and Interns. Item I, Our Volunteers. Again, a large number of volunteers, Pages 7 through 10. We are very lucky in this district to have so many of our community members and parents who are interested and willing to volunteer to help our students. Item J, Substitute Personnel. Item K, A Job Description for the Associate Director of Communication and Marketing. Item L is a resolution. This is a resolution to allow one of our head football coach at Anderson High School to attend the Under Armour All-American Game. One of the students at Anderson and players there, Z Correll, has been chosen as an Under Armour All-American Game participant, and so the coach is allowed to attend or invited to attend. And then, the FTE for October, or I'm sorry, for this meeting, has increased from October. However, I would let you know that this is still negative 3.76 FTE from the end of our 1718 school year. The superintendent recommends that the Board approve the personnel items as listed.
Thank you, Ms. Carnahan. Any questions? Teaching and Learning, Mr. Sears.
Item 12.1, Overnight Field Trip Request for Anderson and Turpin High School Mandarin Students to China During Spring Break of 2020. The administration of Anderson-Turpin High School requests permission for 20 Mandarin 2 and 3 students and 2 chaperones to travel to Beijing, Shuang, and Shanghai, China, April 4th through 12th, 2020, at a cost of $4,000, roughly $4,065 per student, which includes round-trip airfare, hotels, meals, transportation, sightseeing, and a full-time bilingual tour director. The trip is being arranged through EF Tours. The superintendent recommends the Board approve the overnight trip by Anderson and Turpin High School Mandarin Students to China, April 4th through 12th, 2020. Item 12.2, Overnight Field Trip Request, again, for Turpin High School Softball Team to Pigeon Forge, Tennessee during spring break of this school year, 2019. The administration of Turpin High School requests permission for 22 JV and varsity softball players and 6 chaperones to travel to Pigeon Forge, Tennessee, to participate in the Ripken Experience Tournament, April 16th through 20th, 2019, at a cost of $300 per athlete, which includes tournament registration and lodging. Students will travel to and from Pigeon Forge with their parents and guardians. The superintendent recommends the Board approve the overnight trip by Turpin High School JV and varsity softball players to Pigeon Forge, Tennessee. Item 12.3, Resolution to Contract with Applied Behavioral Services. This contract, which has been shared previously, provides transition and stabilization services to a student that was at Anderson High School that displays some significant behavioral challenges, and this support service that, in contract with Applied Behavioral Services, enables that student to receive instruction, intense instruction, for two hours a day with ABS. The superintendent recommends the Board approve the resolution to the contract with Applied Behavioral Services, as shown in the attachment.
Thank you, Mr. Sears. Any questions for Mr. Sears? Thank you very much. Item 13, 13.1 and After, Ms. Cropper.
It's been a busy month. We have quite a list here for you tonight. Agenda Item 13.1 is an annual resolution that the Board approves each November. The resolution requests authority from the Hamilton County Budget Commission to file a modified tax budget for the 1920 fiscal year. The modified tax budget continues to present information for those funds that receive tax revenues and eliminates the requirement to present those funds that do not receive tax revenues. So, the modified tax budget is made up of the five-year forecast for the general fund and appropriations for the debt service, permanent improvement, and building funds. Moving on to Agenda Item 2, this is a calendar that outlines the requirement of the High Revised Code pertaining to the fiscal year 20 tax budget. As you can see by the calendar in your agenda, we will be asking you to approve the tax budget at our organizational meeting on January 4th at 7:00 a.m. Prior to that, the tax budget will be available to the public for viewing at our administrative offices beginning on December 17th. A notice will be placed in the December 4th edition of the Cincinnati Inquirer announcing the availability of the tax budget in our offices. Pending the Board's approval on the 4th, the tax budget will be filed in the Auditor's Office well in advance of the statutory January 20th deadline. Moving on to Agenda Item 13.3, it's an amendment to a lease agreement with Anderson Township, which was originally signed in 2002. The township has requested a couple of changes in this amendment. They are planning on disposing of a portion of the property that is listed in the legal description. That disposal will not affect the portion of the property that the district leases. The amendment also updates the addresses of both the township and the district offices. Moving on...
Question, or actually, a comment?
Sure.
They have brought it up to us. This might be an opportunity for us to go back and take a look at what we're paying them as rental to put an antenna and a repeater on their tower. If we're taking up space they could otherwise use for retail where they'd be getting money, okay, that's fine, I understand it, but if not, it would seem like this might be an opportunity to check to see if we can get a lower rate or no rate, but...
This has been in place since 2002, right?
Right, and it's been increasing by contract every year, and it's significantly, almost double what it was when we first started. So, like I said, this might be an opportunity for our friends in the township to show good faith by giving us an attractive rate or maybe even comping us, but we'll see.
We could certainly pull this item and bring it back to the Board at a later date.
Oh, no, I'm not suggesting that, because we're just changing the address in the agreement, so...
Yeah, this is a 20-year agreement that expires in 2022, so certainly, if they won't entertain another amendment, we could certainly renegotiate it at that time.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item 13.4, this is an agreement for a workers' comp claim. The agreement has been recommended both by Sedwick, our workers' comp administrator, and our attorney. We believe this is fair agreement for both parties to this issue, and the settlement will be funded through the workers' comp fund that the district has set up for this purpose. Moving on to Agenda Items 13.5, 13.5A shows the donations for the month of October. They exceeded $23,000. As always, we are very appreciative of those businesses, individuals, parent and booster groups, that provide monetary resources to enhance the educational opportunities for our students. Agenda Item 13.5B is the Statement of Board Accounts for the month of October. As you see, the federal funds that are reimbursement-type grants, whereby we spend the funds and then request reimbursement for those expenditures, are asterisked, so that you can see those. Agenda Item 13.5C presents the general fund's receipts for the month of October. Cash flow, as you can see, was, is what we would expect, a little low at this point in the year. Primary revenues received during the month were our state, our monthly state foundation payment, which is just under $1.6 million. Revenues in total totaled $2 million, but as expected at this point in the year. Items, Agenda Items 13.5D and E present the expenditures in the general fund for the month and the fiscal year-to-date, October 31st. Expenditures in the general fund are very stable and pretty much distributed evenly throughout the year. With 33% of our fiscal year complete at the end of October, we have actually spent 32.5% of our appropriations, with an additional 8% is committed in encumbrances. So, we are well within the appropriation that the Board approved in September of this year. The October 31st bank reconciliations are presented in Agenda Items 13.5F and G. Appropriation Adjustment Detail is presented in 13.5H. As you can see, we have an adjustment for Ohio Safe Schools Grant, and that's grant number, I'm sorry, Fund Number 499, Miscellaneous State Grant. So, we were pleased to get that $41,000 grant during the month. In addition, Agenda Item 13.5I recommends expenditures from the Board Service Fund. Items 13.5J and K close the student activity account for the recently graduated Turpin High School class of 2018, and opens a student activity account for the incoming freshman, who will comprise the Turpin High School class of 2022. That said, I respectfully recommend that the Board approve Items 13.1 through 13.5K as part of the consent motion that covers Items 10.1 through 13.5K.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Cropper? We then have a motion for, on consent agenda, for Items 10.1 through 13.5 inclusive.
I move to approve Items 10.1 to 13.5.
Second.
Ms. Cropper?
I'm sorry, was that Dr. Heitz? Dr. Heitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Ms. Choice?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frumman?
Yes. Thank you very much. Item 14, 14.1, Business Advisory Council Report, Mr. Prebels.
Business Advisory Council met on November 8th, and during that meeting, they discussed high school graduation requirements, and Brian Robinson, the Associate Director of Secondary Education, presented to the Business Advisory Council, who later that evening unanimously agreed to recommend high school graduation legislation that requires students to pass local courses, meet curriculum requirements, and complete end-of-course exams. The council also supports new legislation that permits alternative pathways, which consider student extended learning and/or career work readiness to be allowed to meet state Ohio graduation requirements. And what they suggested in their letter to several representatives in the state, elected representatives, is that reforms are, that as reforms are considered for existing high school graduation requirements, the Business Advisory Council recommends a continuation of graduation requirements similar to those adopted for the class of 2018. So, what the committee talked about on that evening was, there has been a change in the expectations for graduates in the state of Ohio that negatively impacts about 37,000 students across the state, and our Business Advisory Council sent a letter unanimously requesting that we maintain the current graduation requirements through the next two years. And so, that was one of the things that they talked about. The committee also reviewed our first Teletown Hall Meeting Diagnostic Report, which gave information about questions that people asked and questions that we should be considering for informational items in the future, which are part of some of the mailings that we have taken care of at least since that point. And the committee also asked for additional information regarding salary and benefits of our teachers, total millage comparisons of other school districts, cost-per-pupil comparisons with other school districts, and the tax rates per $100,000 worth of home value. So, they were busy that evening, and we will meet again in February unless we have a special meeting, dependent upon the engagement process that's taking place with the community right now regarding the possibility of a 2019 levy. Operational levy.
Thank you. 14.2, Policy Committee Report, Mr. Smith.
Yeah, the Policy Committee met on October 16th. The Policy Committee is composed of Mrs. Barber, Superintendent Prebels, and myself as Chair, and I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Mrs. Monk, who keeps it all straight. We did meet. We went over a number of policy and bylaw changes, a couple dozen. We had a first reading at our last meeting, and this is the second reading, and so, at this point, I would move that the Board of Education approve the proposed changes to policy and bylaws that are presented in the agenda.
Second.
These are all basically, I don't think there was, Elizabeth, help me remember, I don't think there were any in here that were anything other than procedural, things that came out of legislative requirements.
No, we mostly just took their recommendations.
No.
All right. Ms. Cropper?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Heitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Ms. Choice?
Yes.
Mr. Frumman?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Smith. 14.3, Human Resource Committee Report, we reported last month. There has not yet, not been a further meeting. 14.4, Finance Committee Report, Mr. Smith.
Finance Committee last met on September 13th, and the Finance Committee is Dr. Heitz, Superintendent Prebels, our Treasurer, Mrs. Cropper, and myself as Chair. We are scheduling a meeting, it looks like, for the second week in December, and we've got a number of issues to discuss at that meeting.
Thank you. Teaching and Learning Committee Report, Dr. Heitz.
The Teaching and Learning Committee met on November 6th and discussed, one of the major discussion was the high school graduation requirements. You know, bottom line there, there has been a change. They took away one of the pathways from 2018 that was available for students in 2019, or that was in 2018 for 2019. The, and that's something that, at the Capitol Conference, was a major issue as well. They also discussed learning design specialists through the buildings, which are increasing the collaboration between the buildings. They found that the elementary needs are similar, so trying to get some consistency across the buildings while still allowing for building cultural differences. Talked about the Forest School District Mental Wellness Work Plan, which is slowly emerging. In the past, it's been somewhat random. Now, we're getting coordination across the district with the PBIS, Behavior at Risk Kids, Health Fair, as well as a full professional development... Health Fair, as well as a full Professional Development Day with Beach Acres and Children's Hospital. Also talked about a lot of the health, mental health issues that are, that are, we're dealing with now and how we're coming up with a better overall plan for that. And then lastly, we talked about the English as a Second Language, which is still in a proposal phase, about consolidating that into certain buildings that have the higher number of kids that are involved. So it was a, it was a very good meeting. That was on November 6th.
Thank you. 14.6, Safety Committee, Ms. Barber?
Safety Committee meets on December 13th, in a few weeks, so I'll have an update next time.
Excellent. 14.7, Forest Hills Foundation, Ms. Stone.
Good evening. Yeah, the Forest Hills Foundation Board met on November 14th and we have some programs coming up. We'll have our Interviewing Skills Class, open to all juniors and seniors. That will be on Sunday, January 27th and we're looking for interviewers. If anybody in the community wants to come in and interview high school students, we would love to have you. It'll be right here in this room. You can contact me at info@fhfe.org if you're interested. This year Destination Imagination has 36 teams. We're really, that's the most we've ever had and those teams are up and running now. They will be competing at the regional tournament on March 2nd and again, that will be at NAGL. We're thrilled to have it back in the district. Teacher Grants, the second round, is due next week, December 5th, and we've awarded over $63,000 worth of grants to date and we'll be awarding probably another $12,000 in this next round. The Distinguished Alumni Award Luncheon will be held on Friday, March 15th. The nominations, we've had them come in, those are closed for 2019, but the, anyone's welcome to come to the luncheon on the 15th, or March 15th. And the Forest Hills 5K, I loved hearing the girls talk about Girls on the Run. We have running clubs at every school that they learn pretty much the same thing as what these girls were talking about. All of our elementary schools have running clubs as part of the Forest Hills 5K. They will start in March, February or March. Forest Hills 5K is on May 11th. It's our biggest fundraiser and one of the biggest events in this community and we're thrilled to be hosting that again. This is the 10th annual, so we want bigger and better crowd than ever. And as part of our 10th annual, we have three new co-chairs, Beth Davis and Jenny Nyack. They said they do it for 10 years, so they're doing it for 10 years, but they have some assistants this year, which are Amy Heitz, Sarah Flora, and Maggie Hummel. So we're thrilled to have them on board. And finally, Giving Tuesday is tomorrow and when you wake up in the morning, your email is going to be blasting with requests for money from every organization you've ever looked at. So if you can just save a little bit for the Forest Hills Foundation, because you'll be getting one from us too, so we will be very appreciative of that. So thanks, everyone. Have a good holiday.
Thank you, Ms. Stone. 14.8, Legislative Liaison Report, Mr. Smith.
Well, we are in the lame duck session with our legislature and as the OSBA lobbyists call it, it's the silly season because you never know what's going to happen. Let's see, from the election, Tom Brinkman was reelected as our state rep, Steve Wilson was reelected as our state senator, Pat Brunz, who was our elected State Board of Education representative, was narrowly defeated by Jenny Kilgore. I don't know Jenny. I have served on a number of committees with Pat and she's a very lively committee member in any way. A couple of things that the State Board of Education has done, one of them is they passed a resolution recommending changes to their current report card, changing it to something, actually anything, that does not use letter grades. And I serve on that committee as an OSBA president and it's unbelievably complex because the federal government has requirements, the state legislature has requirements, State Board of Education has requirements. Well, long story short, it's just not easy. The one thing I will say is we all felt that it was misleading to use letter grades, which everybody knows what those are when it comes to student performance, and trying to apply that to evaluating a school system or a school. It's really apples and oranges and so part of the recommendation is they're trying to come up with a different system that better communicated to parents progress of schools, but not misleading it with the A, B, C, D, F grading system that we're all familiar with and automatically think of when somebody says a school district is a B. Second thing was the State Board of Education adopted a resolution recommending the graduation requirements and Dr. Heitz has already covered that. The big challenge, at least the challenge was, and this may have been resolved, but in 2018, there was a waiver for the requirements so that the kids who were in jeopardy of graduating were still able to graduate. They haven't done that yet for 2019 and so that puts us, even Forest Hills, in potential sticky situation. So anyway, that's all I have.
Puts the kids in a sticky situation. It's awful.
Yeah, right. Thank you.
We have on December 13th, there will be a legislative breakfast with the Hamilton County ESC and we are putting together talking points for that with our legislators. So December 13th, we'll be having an opportunity to talk with local legislators one more time about the impacts of graduation requirements on students in Hamilton County and then they'll take that back, just like business advisories have across the state to try to help move this forward for the benefit of the kids in the school, in our school district and across the state.
I think there was hope that during the lame duck session, they would fix that, but I don't know.
And someone showed me today, was it you, Tammy? There's Cincinnati Inquirer had a, I'm sorry, the Dispatch had a comment about the state is moving in this direction, so I think we're making some headway.
Item 14.9 is the Forest Hills Teachers Association Report. Ms. Alver emailed me to indicate they do not have a report, so nothing to report there. Also, I probably should have mentioned this earlier in communications, we did hear from the Forest Hills Marching Band that this Wednesday, November 28th, from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., is dining night out as a fundraiser for the Forest Hills Marching Band at Arthur's Cafe on Beechmont Avenue. 10% of the proceeds for the entire day will go to the Forest Hills Marching Band, so go to Arthur's on November 28th from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. We have a motion for executive session.
Pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G1, I hereby move that the board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, compensation of a public employee or official.
Second.
Ms. Cropper?
Dr. Heitz?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Ms. Choice?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes. Our next regular meeting is December 17th at 7:00 p.m. right here. We do not expect to take any action after our executive session. Thank you for coming this evening. Good to see everyone.